I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to a quick reception of the COVID-19 Council for September 18th, 2023. On roll call, the last standing call that we need, I'll go ahead and take care of this now, I think we have, Filberto is on YouTube, I don't really intend to go for the whole reading, but he has a presentation, so he'll do it when we get to that point in council business, I think he'll do it over YouTube, we'll find out.
Zoom.
Mayor?
Yes.
And at a later time, if I can request to move that to be one of the first items on the council, it'll take about five minutes only.
Okay, we'll move it to the first point.
My Wi-Fi's spotty down here, so I just want to make sure I make it through the whole thing, thank you.
Good, thanks Filberto. Now for attendants, here we need a motion and excuse Filberto for attending, but he's going to be involved in the meeting, if we can have a motion, we'll make sure that's the way we have to do it. We have a motion to excuse Filberto.
He's in the meeting in some ways.
Well, he is, and that's why, when I'd heard he wasn't going to be here, because he sits up last time, we'll leave it alone. Sandy, would you like to call?
Sure, Steve Johnston?
Here.
Dave Jones?
Here.
Lauren Beaker?
Here.
Ellie Casey?
Here.
Andy Holm?
Here.
Filberto Ontavetos?
Here.
There you go, and Milo Mullin.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a full council tonight, very good. Do we have anyone in the room for the public comments on the agenda business, only those items on the agenda here? Anyone here for public comment? If not, we'll close that and go to public hearing. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is the public hearing on the Shoreline Master Program, and that has been completed, the Department of Ecology has completed their review and has approved Goldendale's Shoreline Master Program. The purpose of the meeting is to provide the community with a moment to comment on the plan prior to ratification by our city council. Is there anyone here to comment on the Shoreline Master Program tonight? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing for the Shoreline Master Program. And with that, we will open the second public hearing, and this is on ordinance number 1530. And this public hearing on ordinance number 1530 is to present an ordinance that is to change the RV parks from being outright permitted use to a conditional use, to give the public an opportunity to comment on any proposed applications prior to approval. Is there anyone, anyone here for a comment on the RV parks moratorium, short time moratorium? Hearing none, seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing for ordinance number 1530. And the next item on the agenda is the agenda to adopt, and I propose an amendment that we add an item under council business number H5, land purchase and sale offer for lot seven, block two of our industrial park, Goldendale Industrial Park. With that, can we have, if the amendment is okay, I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Can we also bump into Filberto's presentation up?
Yes, should it. And we'll also, in addition to the amendment for H5, we will also move H3, the recognition committee request from Filberto Ontavetos to the number one item under council business. Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the amended agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Very good.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as amended and the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you, Filberto. The next item is a presentation by our Chamber of Commerce, would you like to come forward?
Teja, how do you spell your first name?
T E J A.
Okay, it's very weird, thank you.
Anyway, my name is Teja, I'm with the Chamber of Commerce, I'm the interim executive director, I just wanted to add myself to the agenda to remind you guys of the art festival, first time in Goldendale, so we hope to see you all there, we hope a really good attendance, especially for the commemoration ceremony at one. This is going to have a bunch of different activities, so if you want to see that, I have programs printed, as well as you can also look at our website, and the road closure from 12 to 3, that's a very important one, the intersection of Columbus and...
It's actually going to be 12 to 2.
Oh, so you, okay, 12 to 2, good to know. So 12 to 2 for the intersection road closure, this is for the commemoration ceremony where we will have Senator King, as well as other state officials and dignitaries, and it will also allow festival goers to attend the, look at Main Street and look at old murals safely. And also a big thanks to the city and their staff for working with me on this, it's been a whirlwind, as well as the art, the art mural artists, committee members, volunteers, and all of that, so that was my little gift. If you have any questions?
What's the date of that art festival, Teja?
23rd, this Saturday, from 11 to 8.
Any other comments or questions from the council? We're looking forward to the event.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, department reports, and we'll hear first from the Goldendale Police Department.
Nothing new to report, looking forward to the art festival, it's going to be blocked off down Main Street, so there will be a lot of events down there, so I said that Columbus will be closed from 12 to 2, so it'll be a little setup and take down time, it's going to be a busy weekend, so we're just looking forward to another event, hopefully everything goes smoothly.
Thank you. Next, the Goldendale Fire Department, Chief Mark Hall.
So, we were contacted by the Washington State Patrol Fire Training Academy, I believe is what they go by, they have a vent and prop trailer for training, and they're going to be bringing it down to us next week, so we can train on that, so it'll be set up out in our Parkmont, and then our firefighters will be able to do some really neat training on that. And also, the pig bowl, I believe it's this weekend, I think it's this weekend, and I know that we're taking asthma, old fire and new down there, that's the intended plan to take that down there and it'll be part of the pig bowl procession in there, so.
That's a big event, that's a good one, thank you. And for Public Works, Pat Munyon, our city manager.
So, the Public Works crews had several water meter installations in the last couple of weeks, they continue, they're continually working on painting the streets, right now we're still on white paint, they were around the day, you may have seen them doing arrows for the turn lanes, once they're done with that, they'll move the yellow, and they plan on getting the curves and other things, whatever else we, yellow painting down that we need, so. And then, on the administration side, I've been primarily working on the union contract for negotiations, and we've started, Dustin and I have been starting working, trying to get the list of people and contacting them that we need to start working on the park planning grant, we'll need an archaeological review and some other people involved in that to help us through being in the floodplain area, what we can do and what we can't do, and how we can mitigate those issues. That's primarily it.
Good, thank you, thank you very much. We'll go now to council business, and we'll begin with the amended item recognition committee request, and Filberto Ontavetos will give us information on that, Filberto?
Greetings, everyone. So, I think at this point, we just need a motion to begin a committee, I feel pretty strong that there are so many great people in the city of Goldendale that do things for the community over and over, year after year, and they do it without recognition, and they do it not for recognition, and it seems to be, oftentimes it's the single people that organize, there's always people that come and go and support the ideas, but there's always the strong central folks that are always organizing events and supporting our community and making it better. And I know, like, there's people that go unnoticed, like Nancy, there at council, we know that she makes it available even before Zoom was a thing, which I'm grateful for today, but even before Zoom was a thing, community members can go to that, and it used to be back on the old cable TV network, and so she's been bringing it live to everybody, or on video to everybody for many years, if they choose to participate or stay up on turn events, I know the Krieg family, the agriculture teachers, both Mr. and Mrs. Krieg, Mrs. Krieg's father has been involved with agriculture for many decades, and being a newcomer to the city, from the city to rural America, I find the value of things like that, that have been huge, that go unrecognized. I know Dr. Ogden was often, and previously asked to be recognized for his efforts in community events, as well as his service as a doctor. So, with that, I would like to ask for the rest of the council members for a motion to approve a new committee, and with the permission of the mayor, and I also feel that this should be the same community members, Dave participated in a really good group that helped with the celebration for the centennial, and those people are all involved, and they should also be part of that recognition, because they did a great work, so if, that would be it, I hope everybody shares the enthusiasm and my feelings towards having something positive, and bring these people recognition for everything they do, all the events they do, and everything they do to make our city that much better.
Thank you, Filberto. Do we have a motion to that effect, reform of recognition committee?
I'd like to make that motion to create that committee.
Very good. We have a second.
Can we have a comment?
Yes, absolutely, please.
I support that notion 100%, I think it's long overdue.
We've discussed it in our talks.
We have discussed it, and it's long overdue, and we should appreciate Filberto's effort to bring to the forefront here and try to create a mechanism to do that, but I also think, I don't think we need another separate committee that would involve more council members taking up valuable time on another committee. What I would like to suggest is give that responsibility to an already existing committee, such as the Events Committee, I think it would work well with that committee, because eventually, this could even become part of an event, Community Days, let's say. And there's a lot of logistics that got to be worked out, we've got to recognize somebody every month, once a year, you know, but nevertheless, I feel that it would be more efficient to do it that way, to give that responsibility to an already existing committee, and it would suggest the Events Committee, you could even just change the name, Events Recognition Committee. And it would disconsolidate, is my suggestion, like I said, I'm behind the effort, I would say.
Well, Mayor, I support that idea, I have maybe just a little concern how often would the committee have to meet, I mean, is it time consuming to do that, and, you know, most committees I've seen, they recognize one person a year, sometimes they do it semiannually, and I don't know, I just think maybe once a month might be a little too often myself, that's my opinion, by that way. There's a lot of people in the community that need to be recognized, but still, you know, might overdo it, I don't know, that's kind of my opinion, but the committee can make that decision, I guess.
Exactly, the events, one of his first pieces of business, determine, I would think probably quarterly, or every six months.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and you can, the community is going to be, where we're going to get a lot of suggestions, and you can do something as simple as a suggestion box, out of a wall, but, you know, they can approach the mayor, they can approach a council member, whatever, but to make these suggestions, and that's going to feed into the committee members that are going to be dealing with, and, yeah, it's, you're not going to have to meet every week, for sure, but, again, I would suggest using an already existing committee.
Phil, what did you think about adding that to the Events Committee?
Yeah, I think the Events Committee would be able to do that, I would like to see, I think we might be able to get some participation from community members outside of the council, so that's where I was thinking, that if, maybe if there was interest from other community members, that we can form maybe a subcommittee of the Events Committee, and that group can bring those names forward, so then it's a community event, right, it's a community item for the community, but either way, it's fine, and I, you know, like, you guys said that there's a lot of people to be recognized, the longer we wait, the more people there is, and we, I mean, I really think we can do it just about every month, and always have somebody new, for at least the first years, but, yeah, maybe quarterly would be great, and I think, yeah, maybe if it goes to the subcommittee, that we can assign the subcommittee to come up with the award name, establish a way to solicit nominations, somebody can write up a nomination and tell us why, so that they can share that information that they know, that would be great.
I think, because there's not different views, but different things added in, that we should table this until October 2nd, the next city council meeting, and have a plan roughed out between Filberto and probably Andy or the other committee.
Sorry to put the motion out there, should I just resend my motion?
Okay, I think they'll give us time to get it all in order, and have a plan for how often, and the way that we want to go at it, I think that would work, but for the October 2nd, agenda, yeah, it's a decision item, that we're going to have a motion to adopt and put in place, and I think we'll know the structure and overall program, if that's acceptable to the council, because I'm kind of running in top of everything else, so.
So the Event Committee is Dave, Andy, and Ellie.
Exactly, and that's a committee that gets a lot of different people from outside the city council that participate because of the involvement in events, so it's an appropriate place to put us, I think, very much so.
You know, on the logistics, once we create, well, once this responsibility is given to, let's say, the rest committee, the logistics, they will hammer out the logistics.
That's it.
I like what we're talking about here.
Okay. Now does the council have to wait until October 2nd to get everything lined up and in place?
Yep, sounds good.
Thank you.
So we just need a motion to table?
Okay, we have a motion to table this.
Motion to bear it. I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to table the recognition committee request until October 2nd, city council meeting, with a proposal and a plan that will enhance and improve the operation and formation of this committee, but it'll be formed as of October 2nd, I believe.
I just like to add one more thing, you know, Filberto mentioned, the longer we wait, there's more and more people coming up, that's part of what I see, you can recognize past and present.
Certainly can.
You know, if you wanted to, so there's not going to be no shortage of people in the community from over the years that could be recognized in some sort of way, if we're going to do this.
I think we'll work out, and Filberto, will you be in some time this next two weeks?
I'll be back on the 30th, oh, I'm sorry, I'll be back on the 29th, so I can meet with anybody, we can definitely get it all processed out and set up to be exactly how it would function, somewhere around the 29th or the 30th would be great.
Great, we'll do that then, and do we have a vote on the motion, and to table this until October 2nd period? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all, I think it's an excellent decision, I think linking it to the Events Committee is a very good idea, and we'll try to put everything together we can come up with, as the Events Committee members, as well as Filberto, just to work out what we want, and then it'll be on the agenda for October 2nd, as council business. Thank you, very much. The next item on the agenda, since it was amended, would be the award of contracts to Epic Aviation LLC, and Pat Munyon will give us the details on that.
Yeah, so we went out for requests for proposals, we always received one proposal from Epic Aviation, and for $4.90, they'll sell it to us in bulk for $4.95 per gallon, staff proposes marking the fuel up to 625 per gallon, and those numbers are based on, with any, we looked at numbers pretty much all over the state, but in this area, that is substantially lower than anybody else can sell it. Right now, the Dells' Ford, it's over $7, the River is like $7.35 per gallon, I don't know why they haven't marked up so high, but also we're trying to do is cover our costs and turn the fuel over, and I think that markup should cover those expenses pretty easily.
Are we decided on the sales price this evening, or?
No, you don't have to, right now, we just need the word of contract.
Well, Mayor, I so moved that we award the fuel contract to Epic Aviation, and to authorize staff to proceed with contract negotiations.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to award the fuel contract to Epic Aviation, and to authorize staff to proceed with contract negotiations. Any further comments or discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is the Airport Advisory Board Bylaws, and Pat Munyon will also give us the background on that.
The only, the committee met, one of the committee members was not able to attend due to work, so one of the concerns was how to set up the committee, the second paragraph of the bylaws addresses that now, I will actually turn this over to Rick, since he's put a lot of work into this, and.
So, I basically, as we've worked through the process, I have continued to make updates and to give them to both Pat and the mayor, and at some point, we just have to get rolling here, and we can make this really complicated, or we can make this a working committee with, you know, as much input as the council has time to give us, the point of this is, is that we can help get the airport moving in a positive direction, get a cohesive vision, and if we need to change things, all you have to do is come and tell us we need to change it, and that's, so as we've done this, as we've gone through this process, I've made the changes that have been requested, a lot of them, I think this is Rev. 3, there's actually been several, but, this pretty much addresses everything that you'd asked for, and it's a fluid, it's a fluid document, if we need to make changes, we can make changes, we've got, we had a list of folks that we want to have on the initial committee, we provided them to the mayor, it's as part of this, it's his job to go out and offer these positions and solicit cooperation, I think we've, I think, I think we've got that handled pretty well, so I really hope that we can pass this.
That's good work.
I'll move to adopt the, what are we calling this? Airport Advisory Board Bylaws, with the amendment in Article 6, that the city council may amend the bylaws directly, rather than having to move through the advisory board itself, so, just a note there, that the city council can make amendments to the bylaws.
You already added that up there.
No, that's right there.
Okay.
It says that right there, right Lauren?
So the current process is that it goes through the advisory board itself to make changes, and then it's later furnished to city council, but city council should be able to make changes independent of the advisory board if we need to make adjustments to meet the city's needs.
Okay.
I'll second Lauren's motion.
Very good, thank you. Any further comments or questions? It's been moved and seconded to approve the Goldendale Airport Advisory Board Bylaws as amended, to include appointment of board members by the city council, if that makes sense.
I'll recede, if that works, if you'd like me to recede first, you can just find the section there again, Mayor, thank you Dave. So, I move to approve the Airport Committee bylaws with the change that the city council may change the bylaws, they may make amendments to the bylaws directly, without moving through the advisory board itself. So we should have a vote on that, right, is that where we're at?
Yeah, we're at the vote on, yes, Rick.
Do I get a chance to talk?
Yes, you do.
I'm in on for that.
Can you come back up to the podium?
Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome, Nancy.
No, I think that's, I think that's a good, I think that's a fine idea, but I think that we should also have... that we should also have, we said by two-thirds margin, and I think that we should, rather than a supermajority, I think we should have the same requirement for the council that we asked for in the, in the airport committee, a two-thirds majority to say, yes, we're going to change the bylaws.
I think it would be the same as any majority for any council motion or action.
Yeah, by council works by majority or supermajority.
Okay.
So, supermajority would be you and five of you. So, it still, it's, it works out the same as two-thirds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Standing practice. Thanks for that.
Okay, now we vote?
Yes, now we can vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thanks, Phil Verdo, and thank you for the initiative on the appointments committee for people that we want to recognize. That was good work. Appreciate your initiative to put that out there for us. Thank you. We'll go now to item four of the draft interlocal agreement between the city of Goldenale and Clickedad County for district court services. And that's one.
You want me to do that, or you want to?
It'd probably be quicker than me doing it, but either way.
So Jake Anderson, as you guys probably recall, came here several months ago and talked about the changes. So basically, what they're proposing in this is, you know, there's always the whole harmless label term. I would definitely, before we sign this, recommend that we have our council review this, our council or attorney review this. The compensation, as Jake presented earlier this year, would be based on the three previous years' average, what we would pay for the court, court cost at the new current calculation, which I think comes out to 6% or something like that, for a toll of, this year being between $76,000 and $77,000. So what's, I don't know if you guys have had much time to go over this yet, or if you want us to give you more time to read it and come back at next council meeting. What we're looking for here tonight, the staff is just seeking direction from council members on how they would like to proceed.
I had a couple of questions that came up, and we don't have to answer them tonight, but I just put it out there, maybe, you know, staff will look and know, but, and one is simple, I just don't understand the judicial process, but does this cover the prosecuting attorney as well? I mean, do we use prosecutor attorney services?
Yes, so he's the one who's prosecuting a lot of our cases.
For the city as well?
As well as our city as well.
We have our own prosecuting attorney. They go through the prosecuting attorney's office for the courthouse.
Part of it with the city, we do have our own city attorney for misdemeanor crimes. Any juveniles or felony crimes go through the county, through the county PA, it's selected in. They handle all of our judicial system for that. We do just municipal court, but we use the county's courthouse, their court clerk, their judge, their facility, and all of that on every misdemeanor or felony charge, so that's kind of a.
So misdemeanors and felonies are handled by ours?
Well, no, not felonies. Misdemeanor only is handled by ours. All traffic violations go through East District Court. We use their whole facility, they, our search warrants go through East District Court. In the past, we have, they have not charged us for stuff. That was kind of the last guy came and explained how we've got the service for free, and now because of the amount of calls we've put in through the court system, that's where these charges came up, and they're dividing it between Binge Y Sam and us and the county, so.
So on felonies, so the council understands is that's Superior Court, so all, in any county, all felonies go to Superior Court, which is, comes out of the Superior Court. They're tax dollars from county taxpayers, not ours. We don't pay for this, even though if we write the, or we charge the felony, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, I think that's about it. There's, I had another thought, I lost it.
I know previously we've discussed the amount that they, the 6.3% equates to, and we looked at whether we'd be able to put that in the budget, and we do, that's, for something that's coming at the council, we're working on the budget, but that, the funding for this increase is still an incredible bargain. Even though it has been increased by the county commissioners, it fits well.
And if the city doesn't go with the county, we'd have to provide our own courtroom, our own court system, which would be a lot more than that, what they're charging us to, kind of piggyback on the.
I mean, no Goldenale in the past tried to do that, but the only reason I know it is because it's still our municipal code, that you guys had your own municipal court. But I've been talking to Larry, and Larry's knowledge of the history of that, it only lasted a few short years, because at the price we're getting this for, it would be double or better for us to run our own municipal court, because then we're providing, you know, the prosecuting, or we're providing the judge, the prosecuting attorney, and then we, in a lot of cases, would be firing, have to provide defendant attorney as well for those who can afford one. There's very few municipalities this size that run their own municipal court anymore because of the expenses, and we would end up being a full-time, probably, court clerk as well.
That was one of my other.
Back to that part where we are going to share expenses between, what's that, Binge?
Well, there's a, overall with, it's kind of like the jail, the same thing.
The same.
Everybody has their chunk of the pie that they pay, so, and so we're, it's probably based on our percentage of calls that go through, that needle, and so Binge Y Sam has the pace that their rates went up to, so it's not as, just full, you know.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, or the interesting guess is, how is that figured out? Is it per capita, per call?
Yes, per calls. We were higher pulling calls, unfortunately, so.
That does relate to one where the question's about, is each call, any, you know, so are the whole city calls each cost about, say, $10,000? So every incident, or is the county's call typically far less than the city's call? How does that, how does that work out?
Price-wise, or?
Yeah, price-wise, like the cost of each incident or event, like statistically, can you really just divide it by number of calls versus, what is the actual cost of each call?
It'd be the number of charges that go through, not the number of calls. I mean, because we have, out of 3,000 calls, we may have 500 that get charged, or citations, or.
Okay, so charges and straight calls.
Normally, the total cost of that should be the same between us and county, whoever, you know, the whole court system, it's, you know, we're not getting upcharged for, because we're Goldenale, there's just the actual cost of running a whole court system, and we send a lot of stuff through the court, so it's per, I'm assuming it's the same.
The formula's the same for all three cities. So if our call volume goes down, theirs goes up, they're going to be paying based on the same, it's a percentage thing on how it works, so.
Okay, but each case or charge or call?
The court fees are the same.
Oh, they are the same?
Yeah, yeah. Well, if you, like, that's who you're referring to, so like, if you got arrested in City Goldenale, your court fines and all that are the same as, you know, and the problem is, is when people get these court fines, they get on a payment plan, they don't get, you know, so some of the money's recouped, and that's why it's still low, the $7,000 instead of, if it wasn't recouped, we'd probably be looking at $100,000, $200,000, I mean, it's.
So a traffic ticket goes to court, that costs the same, and it's something way more complicated, that may go through the judicial process for a while. A background.
For the court cost, it's probably the same. For the court system, for the fines, it's different.
It's different, yeah.
Because right now, if I write a speeding ticket for $100, the city gets, I mean, 10% of that, the state gets the rest of the money out of that $100 fund, so.
But processing is turned up.
Yes, but processing through the courts, their charges for the lawyers, for the court clerk, for the judge, for all that, the paperwork process that goes through the court system. Like I said, they also do our search warrants, through the process, we need to return service, that all goes through East District Court, so.
Excellent, thank you.
And we're going to have, take only a portion of that, county picks up a massive part of it because of the buildings, the clerks, the personnel, the entire system.
Our court subsidizes their employee company, there's a lot of overhead with the court system, unfortunately. I'll, my recommendation is to go with their offers, very good price for the difference of, if we had to do our own, to try and structure and run that. I mean, if somebody else wants to run a court system, great, is a cheap place, I do not. So, you know, that's one.
Now, all we're asking for is just direction for the staff.
Yeah, what we're wanting to know is how you guys want to proceed. Do you want to have this sent off to our attorney and have them send something back to the county for the red lines they want to make first, or are we happy with the formula here, or do you guys want to counter something in this? I don't think it's going to.
Probably wise to have our attorney look it over.
Yeah, I would strongly advise to have our attorney. What I would do is, we didn't get a Word document, I would ask Jake Anderson for a Word document that we can send over to our attorney, where he can review it, redline any concerns he has, and then we can bring that back at the next council. We'll probably present it before that, if that's okay, just so they have, can get started on their, maybe, comments back. Well, I think the best way that we'd do it is just have our attorneys or coordinate with, because I think the prosecuting attorney is the one who's dealing with this contract, and have them, maybe, communicate a red line back and forth until they can get it resolved, and then, but we can bring it back to you.
Nice to know how it compares to others. Sounds like it's pretty common, how it compares to other agreements.
I've worked in a city similar to this size, at $76,000, that would be better than I seen in a 90 for a city of a thousand less.
No, I meant the terms of the contract.
Oh, the terms of the contract.
Not the dollar.
The contracts, boy, I mean, I've seen a lot bigger contracts than this one, it seems to be pretty minor compared to some of the other ones I've seen, that are a lot more complicated contracts on how they're, they're doing their billing.
I don't know if that's a good thing or bad. It's usually easier, but easier isn't always better.
Yeah, but I'll ask, well, I'm sure Quinn doesn't think it's a good contract, he'll redline it up pretty good, so.
That's good, thank you.
Yep.
The consensus is, as stated, it will have a lawyer weigh in on it and begin the process to prepare something that can be adopted.
I agree.
There'll probably be more discussion because it's something that is probably more complex than we realize sometimes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to note my abstention from that consensus or anything related to this, as that is my current employer, so abstain from any comments, consensus, or anything about this.
Okay. Good, good jump out of this. Thanks, Phil Verdo.
Now, we can do this by consensus rather than motion.
I think so. It's up to Pat what you would like.
I don't need a motion right now.
I think we're just looking for direction.
I'm just looking for a direction from you guys on how you want us to proceed, and then we'll go from there.
We'll see, a good discussion of what's expected and what can be done from that. It's in good shape.
I support it.
And thank you, Pat, for saying that. I've never gotten that far. The last item, item five of the council business, is the land purchase and sale offer for Lot 7, Block 2. Pat will present the details.
Yeah, this was the last initial one. Did you guys not get it?
It was on everybody's table. Everybody did.
Case five, land purchase.
Sorry, this was last minute. If you can see from the date, this just came in today, and given that there's an offer on the table, so the, it's for Lot 7, Block 2, which is the lot that's just west or behind the police station there.
We're going to block our view.
Huh?
We're going to block our view.
Yeah, sorry, so.
You can move back.
You ain't going to be able to see PSE anymore. It's one of the, the lot is one of our lots that has some geography challenges on it. This is, we had the lot listed for $99,000 was what we were originally asking for, and this offer is substantially lower than that. I think some of their concerns is its power, even though it's in front of the property, it's not ran into the property. There are, like I said, a little bit more groundwork there because it is on a hillside, but this is entirely up to your, up to you guys and your decision. The one thing it may do is it may spur some more interest if we do sell it.
It might. It may also establish the benchmark for pricing.
That's the potential. Well, some of the other lots are.
Before we go, I just wonder if this should be a topic to be covered in executive session?
Well, you would need the attorney to do that. We can do that at the next meeting.
You need an attorney to go into executive session?
Yeah, I'll explain later, but yes.
But it has to do with the fact that it's a transaction at this time, so it would be covered.
Yeah, it would be, I looked it up today.
So you, okay, so you want to discuss negotiations on price of real estate in an open session, and you?
We can wait till next council meeting.
And you're saying that we can only move to executive session with an attorney present?
I tried to call him, but you couldn't make it.
Well, let's, let's flip this here. It's either we have a general unanimous consensus that this is agreeable or not, and if there's just more or not, then we'll have to move in Lauren's direction.
I think we should sell it. That's a good offer. We've been trying to sell that land up there for decades.
Literally.
I move to approve the sale of Lot 7, Block 2 at the industrial park for $70,000.
I'll second it.
Any further comments or questions? It's been moved and seconded to approve the sale of Lot 7, Block 2 at the industrial park for $70,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstained.
I was going to ask about that. One abstention, okay.
Phil, what was yours?
I am going to abstain.
Yes, you.
Okay.
Can we cut that further?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I see this as a win-win.
Me too.
It's a local business that's already well-established, you know, well-established in the community, and it's solid, solid, and again, it's going to set a good precedent for us.
Yes.
And I think it's a win-win. I just, I still have funny things about selling that land outright, that what kind of recourse does the city have should the new owner go crazy on us?
Is that zoning?
You know, if they want to change their type of business overnight or something like that, wouldn't say they have the right to do this.
Well, yeah, they own the land, but they have to still comply with the zoning requirements.
Well, okay, that's, that's a little bit of.
They can't go build a residence there.
Right, right, right. I'm just saying, you know, when we sell this land, we sold it, it's a new home, and just a little anything with it, but nevertheless, I guess, it is a compromise we may have. And, uh, just a little uneasy with it, but nevertheless, I guess, it is a compromise we may have to deal with. Uh, you know, we've talked about leasing it as opposed to selling in the past. But anyway, this is probably a discussion for a later date, we've already decided on this, and I just wanted to.
But we will have.
So that's on the table.
And I'm excited to get a piece of land sold up there, it's been a long time.
It is.
Yes, we're not gonna get it.
Sold.
Sold.
So we're settled?
I think so.
Okay. But all these things, if they come up, or if we, we can still do a lot with anything that the city's involved in to, so is the council saying accepted or not accepted?
That's true.
Thank you. The next item is, uh, under ordinances, and this is, the first one is ordinance number 1530. And this is the one that was discussed, is the ordinance to change RV parts from outright permits, permitted use to conditional use to give the public an opportunity to comment on any proposed applications prior to approval. The staff is recommending approval and it takes a simple motion to do that. If you have questions, this is what we already worked in the public hearing too, so I think we're firm ground with this.
Yeah, if you look, review through the document, the, the language that was deleted from the permitted use was in red, it lined through, and then the language added into the conditional use in each chapter was in bold and underlined. It was, you know, pretty simple changes on all three documents, it's basically the same section in all three documents. And if you're looking for the red on the first, uh, if you, when the ordinance starts, look at the top of the page. It's way up on top here, lined through. But that, that same principle is evident on all three.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1530. As amended and presented?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, ordinance 1530, as amended, as, use a different term.
Presented.
As presented, a little bit different. Any further questions or comments? If not, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Phil, I'm not leaving you out. Very good, motion passes unanimously. The next item is ordinance number 1531, and this has to do with repeal, I'll give this to Pat because I think, there was a word in there, I wouldn't show what it was.
Yeah, um, this is to repeal the, the previous shoreline master plan and adopt, and, or any preceding resolutions that were adopted and replace it with this 2023 shoreline master plan. And the ordinance is adopting this by reference. So when we're adopting ordinance 1531, uh, we put that, uh, this in the municipal code, it'll go under the reference section. You guys understand what I mean by that? It's when we, like, building codes, when we adopt those, so instead of putting this whole document into the actual ordinance, it'll go into the, that section of references as a, as a supplement to the code. So it becomes part of municipal code by reference, does that make sense?
I move to adopt ordinance number 1531.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 1531. If no further comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously, this is primarily House committee. We'll go now to report of officers, and we'll begin with the city council, we'll start with Steve.
Nothing this evening, it's starting to be bad, I can tell I'm pretty misty.
That's setting my day.
All right, I can't believe that.
Thank you.
Oh, well, thanks, Mayor, well, just really looking forward to that art festival this weekend, that's exciting. Thanks, you guys, for all that work you've done on that, just another exciting event that the Chamber of Commerce is bringing here, and really look forward to it, thanks.
Very good. Go on.
No report.
Ellen.
Andy.
I just have, well, question comments for the fire chief, he brought up asthma, this next year is gonna be 100 years old, correct?
Yep.
That was Goldendale's first fire track.
First authorized fire apparatus.
So is there plans to do anything with that next year?
Yes.
Okay, I might be jumping the duck.
Um, yeah, we're starting, we just started some kind of a committee, um, through our Fire Department Association to try to get some donations for helping restore some of the stuff, so the engine needs a year ago, um, it needs new tires, um, different things like that, and, um, here pretty soon I'll probably be asking, it is still owned and operated by the City of Goldendale. So it is one of those things that I might come back and ask, see if we can find some monies to like replace tires or something like that. But for the most part, we're gonna start looking for donations and everything like that.
Thank you.
Probably doesn't go very fast.
I think it hops out of 17.
I really like asthma, that's all I can say.
It looks good on parade.
Yeah, it does.
Thank you, Miley.
Well, thank you, Mayor, I just, uh, also compliment on the art festival coming up on September, the Saturday, the 23rd. And like, it's like, uh, Joan said that Dave said that it's gonna be a good event, and the Chamber did a lot of work on that, so it's gonna be an exciting event, so look forward to it, thank you.
Thank you, Phil Bartow.
Um, just want to thank everybody for the work that everybody's doing. I've actually had the opportunity to play tourist, uh, went to Mexico on the 16th for their Independence Day there, some celebrations, and then back in El Paso, Texas, and got to participate in some musical events and festivities they had. Um, and I definitely now recognize even more so, um, the arts and the festivities that the Chamber does. Cause, you know, after participating and being able to see those here, um, I'm already making plans for coming back and seeing those again, so I know that people visiting Goldendale, um, will do the same with all the different art projects and festivities that the council, the Chamber is doing. So, um, just great job to everybody there and, um, we'll see you guys back at home in two weeks.
Thank you, Phil Bartow, thank you. On the mayor's side, it's just to express appreciation for how well this coun, this council has worked together tonight on several things that were difficult to get to clearly, and I think it's a real asset to have a council that works as hard as you do to get through some fairly difficult spots in cooperation, and it's a good thing. Thank you. Pat, on city administration, I think you covered, I heard the hell you. Next item is, uh, on the comment. Get your name, address, and, uh, a limited three minutes.
Excuse me, my name's Kay Garner Schmidt, I live west Goldendale, I do not give out my street address. Here on Speedy, east and west on Darland, north and south on Washington. There was a horrific wreck on Washington, went through the intersection on Darland into Mark Dubrowski's workshop, knocked a lot of things off the building inside, something has to be done with the speeding on those two roads. Last night, there were cars honking at the deer, deer are really gonna listen like a four-year-old, yeah. Someone's gonna get killed, there's been wrecks on that corner, putting up a sign that says slow down or you're going 35, even though it is 35, then it moves to 25. There's going to be a bad wreck. And one guy already took out a fence and a, not the PUD, but something else a few years ago, then there was a wreck about a year ago. And this just isn't teenagers, these are full grown adults. And, uh, I don't know who's in charge of it, I don't know, is the city, the police? Either lower it or do something, because just putting a sign out there saying, slow down, you're going too fast, isn't working. And there are kids walking up and down that street, somebody's gonna get hurt or killed. And I've been wanting to do this for a long time, and I thought tonight would be the night. So think about it, go down there and look, anytime, day or night, I could even give you descriptions of the cars. I can't give you the license numbers, they're going too fast. And I don't know if they're a man or a woman because they're going too fast. And it's, it's bad. And no offense, Chief, I don't see a lot of Goldendale police cars going around up and down.
That's because up until this last month, we've had half-staff. We have a dresser issue with the coming in on Darland, if you've noticed the speed sign there, the lights up speeds that flashes, and it's right across from your address area, but I did bring that up for you when you made the first concern to us. Yep, the other accident was actually DUI, the man was arrested, um, we investigated that, he was charged with driving all under the influence. Um, that's something that we cannot.
Do it.
Control, that's a hit-miss type thing, if we see somebody, we do arrest for that, that crime, um, we do patrol Washington Street and Darland. You know, that's why we did the new decals on the vehicles, so hopefully you can see the presence that we are in the area. Um, I know I come and go from that street, um, every day that I come to work, um, so I patrol a minimum of twice a day. And so we are aware of it, and we'll do the best we can under the circumstances we can, you know, if it is 35 miles an hour right there, it's something that we could lower a speed, you know, at this time, the collisions and the amount of citations we've written from there don't probably equate to that much change, um, compared to other streets we've had worse problems on. And so, but we will continue to keep the sign there for you and try and get that down.
I'm not bad about you, or the department, I'm just, I'm voicing my opinion.
And I thank you for that, because without people and the citizens allowing or letting us know where the problem areas are, we can't correct those behaviors, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I often think we don't realize how important public comment is, just as this pointed out, something that a resident right on that corner sees, brings to our attention, so things can happen, it can change, it's really, really appreciated that you came forward.
Thank you.
Always, anytime you call or throw rocks or whatever, it's important because.
I'll go off their stamp.
No, tell them who you may have saved, including yourself, get across those streets. Any others from the comment? If not, we'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I would like to respond to the latest citizens' concerns about speeding, and to address that, I would like to request a traffic safety committee meeting. To address, to primarily address that, cause we've talked, I don't know if that's my ideas.
Okay.
And, uh, let's break through that.
That's a committee that can take steps.
That's good. Would be, can we nail down the time, the date?
Pat?
You're on the right one, it's empty.
It's also locked since we met, I know I'm on it.
It's the mayor, it's the chief, it's you and Steve.
I think Pat.
Never said it would be.
Well, we have, we have one since it came on, sort of sweet, but it's, it's, uh.
That was not cheap.
But it works. It was all on the committee.
Uh, Steve, Mike, Mike, anyone?
Okay, do you want to meet later this week? Sure, that's good for you.
Thursday afternoon?
That doesn't work for me, no.
Thursday at what time, 3?
I'm flexible.
That's fine, Thursday afternoon.
Want to clock?
Yeah.
One o'clock? Mayor, you good for one o'clock?
I hope so.
Okay, so Thursday, Thursday the 21st at one o'clock.
Are you leaving?
Were you leaving?
I have company, but they'll probably be eating, then I can.
Okay, so you'll be able to be here at 1?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Now we'll go to, unless there's other good ideas, that was a good action. We have a motion to adjourn.
I read you the motion.
Did you?
Yes.
Second.
My wife always says I don't pay attention. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, city council for September 16th, 18th, 2023, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I'm not even gonna ask you if I can vote.